Good morning. It's 8:30. I'll go ahead and call today's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. The first thing on the agenda today is a approval of the agenda.
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ebinger and a second from Commissioner Kravenoff to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard today. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to address the county board on any item that is not on the agenda? Steve?
We have nothing, Madam Chair.
Are there baseball signals going on?
[laughing]
I'm giving you signals to Matthew back here.
Oh, to shut the door. Okay. All right. That's okay. All right, seen none. We'll move into the next item, which would be the approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Baer to approve the payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
And a second offered from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries. The minutes from February 4th, 2025 were included in the packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion offered from Commissioner Baer to approve the minutes. And a second from Commissioner Kravenoff. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries. Item two today is the annual department update from our Recorders Office, and we have Kimberly Savageo, our recorder. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here today. I am here to present my annual department update for the Recorder's Office.
Can you scoot it just a little bit?
Can you hear me better now? Okay. So the mission statement for the Recorder's Office is to promptly record, file, and preserve documents in efficient, responsible, and professional manner for posterity and legal purposes. I have a picture of the staff that's in my office. I have Amanda, who is my chief deputy, and Lisa and Jacob, who are my deputy recorders. Responsibilities of the Recorder's Office are real estate recording, birth records, death records, marriage licenses and certificates, marriage officiant registration, notary public registration, and the filing of state and federal tax liens. 2024, we recorded just over 8,500 real estate documents, over 600 marriage licenses issued, almost 200 marriage officiant filings, over 100 notary commissions, and we issued over 4,500 certified birth and death certificates. So we had a pretty busy year in the Recorder's Office. I guess I've never really talked about what recording is in our office. I've kind of only given you numbers. So for recording, I thought I'd go a little deeper into it this year. We have two systems for recording, abstract and torrents. Torrens is a system of registration where the county guarantees the title for that property. There's roughly over 300 parcels that are torrents in our county out of the 30,000, so it's not a lot, but it is an important part of our office to maintain those certificates of titles for the torrents property. There's over 300 different document types that we record, and those documents come to us both electronically and in paper to our office. Since COVID, the electronic presentation has increased, and about 75% of the documents come in electronically. We offer online searching of our real estate records through two different programs. Some are pay-as-you-go, some are subscription. We do offer some services online free of charge through our county website. That would be copies of Platts, recorded coroner certificates, and survey records. And so the public can go online and search our website free of charge for those records. And then also thanks to COVID and the money that we received, all of our documents are imaged back to the beginning of time. So the very first deed and the very first easement that was recorded in Clay County are all accessible and imaged on our online system, which is pretty neat to have. Kind of how does a deed get recorded? There's many different steps that go through the recording process. It's not just stamping and filing and putting a number on the document. The documents first come to the Recorder's Office, where we check it for statutory recording requirements. We then route the deed to the Auditor's Office, who determines a tax parcel ID, what taxes are owed on it. They certify that there's no delinquent taxes. And then the deed is routed back to our office for recording, where we do some checking of it again. And then once we are ready, it's scanned, it's indexed, it's proofed, and then it's stamped with all of the recording information, and then it's sent back to the presenter. So the deed has multiple different times it's being looked at and everything before it gets recorded. Most, all of the documents go through a similar process, not all get routed to the Auditor's Office. One of the things that we do offer is Property Fraud Alert. This is a service that is of no charge to the consumer. You can sign up to be notified by text, a phone call, or an email. This does not prevent fraud from happening, but it's a notification system of when something is recorded in our office by your name. Often, people don't come and check what's recorded on their property very often, so this would give like a timely notification if there was something recorded that you weren't expecting.
I have one question on that. How would you sign up for that? Could you, yeah, if I was going to come into your office to sign up for that, how would we do that?
Yeah, we could go online through propertyfraudalert.com, and then you can check, choose Clay County there. Otherwise, we can assist in the office in doing that, and we also have an 800 number that can assist in signing up for that.
And you sign up all your property, whatever you want to?
So it doesn't register by your property, it's by your name.
Okay.
We do that because people's property changes. When you go to sell something or buy something, you don't want to have to sign up again. There's other documents that can be recorded in our office that aren't necessarily indexed against a piece of property, such as like a power of attorney or a state or federal tax lien, then you would get notification of that as well.
Thank you.
One of the other things that we see quite often with customers coming to our counters, I wanted to talk about this here for anybody that may be watching. There is something in Minnesota. They send out copies that look like government mailings asking you to request to purchase a copy of your deed, up to $90. These are not anything that come from Clay County. They are trying to get your money, and they will never send you your deed, is what I have heard. So just a reminder for the public, if you ever need to get a copy of your deed, you come and get that from us at the Recorder's Office. Do not request that through any of those mailings that you may receive in the mail after your property's recorded. Switching to the other side of our office, we do vital records. So Clay County is able to issue certified birth certificates for anyone born within the borders of Minnesota. You have to be an authorized requester, meaning you have to be the subject or the parent. You can't just come in and request a certified copy of anybody's birth record. You have to have a reason to get that. We would need to have valid ID, and the fee for that is $26. We also issue death records, and we can issue death records for anybody who passed away within the borders of Minnesota after 1997. Before that, it would be for only people who passed in Clay County. Again, you have to be an authorized requester, need valid ID, and the fee is $13. Marriage certificates, that's another one that we've been issuing a lot of with the requirement for the real ID coming up shortly. We issue certified copies for couples that apply for the license here in Clay County. MOMS is a statewide collaboration where you can search to see which county or marriage record was actually held in. There are times, different laws throughout time in Minnesota where not even both parties needed to be present to apply for the license. So some people that need the certificate don't even know what county it was applied in for. So this statewide index at moms.mn.gov is a collaboration of all of the counties in Minnesota to search those records. We also issue marriage licenses. They're valid for six months and can be used within the borders of Minnesota. Applicants have to be 18 years of age or older, and the fee for that is $115. They start the application online through that MOMS website and then appear in person to complete the process. Last but not least, one of the services that we added to our office last year was the addition of marriage ceremonies. We started in June of 2024, and for that, we did 36 ceremonies in 2024 at a $150 fee for those.
How many this year so far?
I'd say maybe a half dozen. So.
And you're the one doing it, right, Kim?
Yes, yep. Yes, I was kind of surprised too, but it kind of shows the need, the need that was there.
And you enjoy doing it?
I do. Any questions for me or for the Recorder's Office?
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
Just to start off, preface my question with, I'm at Kimberly's, the Recorder's Office is in my portfolio, and it's been a great four and a half years of watching Kimberly and her staff bring us into the 21st century, getting so much documentation put into the electric, electrical components that people can get over the internet. Just great work on that. I've had a couple of lawyers I know talk about what a great office you've got. And if you give me, if lawyers can't find something to complain about, I'm sure Brian can tell you, if they're used to being skeptical, and both these guys think you guys are the bomb. So really grateful for the work you and your team do.
Thank you.
But on the marriages, you, I understand now you have multilingual opportunities. How are you working that?
Yes, so we use a video translation service for the marriage ceremonies, so we can offer that in multiple different languages and have done that, and have done it in multiple different languages too. So it's an experience.
That'd be interesting.
Yeah.
But good work. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have no more.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your presentation. Thanks for the work you and your staff continue to do all year long. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item three today is a recognition of the proclamation for Government Communicators Day on February 21st, 2025.
Good morning, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, for your consideration this morning is an official proclamation celebrating the great work across the region that our government communications staff do. This board, several years ago, established a position at the communicator with Jackie here, and also then last year recognized an addition to the Communications Department within the GIS Department. So this morning, we're requesting authorization to have the board sign this proclamation in addition to the City of Fargo, West Fargo, Horace, Cass County, City of Morehead, City of Dilworth, and of course, us. And with that, I'd yield for any questions.
Questions from the board? Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
I was going to say I can read it before or after, but maybe a motion to approve first.
Motion to approve this.
Motion from Commissioner Ebinger and a second from Commissioner Baer. So the official proclamation from Cass County, the cities of Fargo, West Fargo, Horace, State of North Dakota, Clay County, and the cities of Morehead and Dilworth from the state of Minnesota. Whereas the role of government communications professions is to inform, educate, and engage their communities, and whereas robust communication in government creates trust and inspires residents to take action and be involved, and whereas government communications create relationships and calls to action, builds awareness and understanding through storytelling, engage and foster engagement on civic issues, and use all channels to include people in critical decisions, and whereas it is essential to have strong communications in government because it is a foundational element of living in a democracy where citizens have the freedom to make their voice heard, and whereas our communities are proud and have deep gratitude and recognition for government communicators, professionalism, dedication, hard work, commitment, enthusiasm, and sacrifice. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Timothy J. Mahoney, Mayor of Fargo, Shelley Carlson, Mayor of Morehead, Bernie Dartis, Mayor of West Fargo, Jeff Trudeau, Mayor of Horace, Chad Olson, Mayor of Dilworth, Robert Wilson, Cass County Administrator, and Kevin Campbell, Clay County Commissioner, do hereby proclaim February 21st, 2025 to be Government Communicators Day in the counties of Cass and Clay and cities of Fargo, Morehead, West Fargo, Horace, and Dilworth, and encourage all residents to thank governmental communicators who have dedicated their careers to ensure their community has effective, impactful, and successful communication strategies that resonate and are relevant. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. And I just want to go on the record that we have the best communicators out of all of those folks, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our 8:50 item would be the annual department update from Human Resources. We have our HR Director, Anna Moore. Good morning.
Okay, so this morning, I'm here for the HR Human Resources Department Update. Our staff is currently made up of four individuals. Sarah Hellem, she is our administrative assistant. We actually, she's actually a .5 FTE in HR. We also share her with the administrator. Melissa Young, she is our HR generalist. She has been here for 17 and a half years. Our newest employee is Jesse Armstrong. She just joined us last month. And then myself, I have been here for five years. While we have a lot of responsibilities in HR, this is kind of a high-level overview of kind of the main things. Employee relations is one of the most important to me, and then another big item is recruiting, interviewing, hiring, onboarding, benefit administration, payroll administration. Although we don't process payroll, we are responsible for all the changes that occur on the front end of payroll so that people can be paid appropriately, whether that is step increases, benefits, taxes, address changes, et cetera. HR compliance and policy development, that's not just an HR task. That kind of spans across a lot of departments, a lot of individuals. Performance management, so the employees' annual evaluation. We do look at every single one of those that comes through. HRIS, so our Human Resources Information System, so our UKG and a variety of platforms that we use. And then another big undertaking is FMLA and workers' compensation. We sit on many committees in Clay County. All of them kind of serve a different purpose. So anything from safety to insurance to personnel. One that is new to me in my new role is going to be the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Personnel Committee. We also have a user group, MNCCC. So what that is, is as I've mentioned, UKG is our HR system. We are part of a, it's not necessarily a co-op, but a group across the state where there's approximately 20 counties that have the same system as us, so we get group discounts and we all can, I guess, how do I say this? We are a resource to one another. So if we're struggling with a specific something in the system, we just call one another to figure that out. So employee data. So as I said, employee relations is a big part of HR. As of yesterday, we have 690 employees in Clay County. We do have a new hire this morning, so as of today, there'll be 691. But this is the breakdown. The HR coordinator, so Jesse, has all relations with full-time and then the permanent part-time employees. So the point six, point, or excuse me, point five to point eight. And then Melissa handles all of the variable hour inquiries as well as temporary and seasonal. So 690 employees. We are growing exponentially. You can see last year, for the department update, there were 642 employees. Broken down for the workforce, however, the age of everyone. I won't read every single number there, but we do have a split of 278 men and 412 women. And then the resident states, so 409 in Minnesota and then 275 in North Dakota. The other six, that can be, is most likely going to be younger college students that are maybe here for just that college, and their maybe, their primary residence is another state, so. All right, the ethnicity of employees. I know this is pretty small. I won't read every number, but we do have to capture the demographics of every employee. We submit that on a regular basis to the state. Some of this, I know Public Health specifically does ask for this fairly regularly for grants and things of that nature. Health insurance, kind of probably one of the most complex parts of HR. I won't get into every single benefit that we offer, but kind of the main one is going to be health insurance. So as of yesterday, we have 512 employees that are benefit-eligible, and then the breakdown of the county contribution and how those 512 people receive their contribution. So 74 families, 200 employees that are grandfathered, meaning they were benefit-eligible on or before, excuse me, they were benefit-eligible on or before 12/31/2019. And then non-grandfathered is anyone that was benefit-eligible on or after 1/1/2020. And one thing that you all recognized and made changes to for 2025 is married couples. So we have nine married couples in Clay County, meaning both spouses work for Clay County. So those individuals, if they want, it's not required. One of them, one of the employees can waive coverage as long as the other one is carrying a family policy. So we do have nine married couples in Clay County as well. Some additional information. So as I mentioned, we are responsible for all workers' compensation claims that come through. So we received 47 accident forms in 2024. Not all of those had great detail to them. Some of them are recordable or like incident-only, so there was no further action besides the report, no medical attention or any follow-up care was needed. Some of those did go through the entire workers' compensation process, and then some of them were also recorded with OSHA. I don't have a breakdown of all of that, but we received 47 incident forms last year. HR also receives all citizen concern forms, so citizens can submit a concern on our website. Those can be, they all are essentially initially routed to HR, and then we kind of delegate them to the applicable department. If the citizen doesn't know who the complaint is to or where the incident or concern should be voiced, it comes to HR, and then we kind of figure that out. A lot of them actually are for the City of Morehead, and we send those over there, but. And then employee applications. We received 1,160 applications in 2024, so quite a few.
Ms. Abbott, give me mine. Can you back up? Oh, you're there. So I'm curious, are those numbers, is there any trend line? Are there, do they jump radically, or?
So I don't have an answer for you right now. I can certainly find that. I didn't look at that data, but as our workforce continues to grow, I'm confident that the work claims also grow, just as it's kind of expected. And then, yes, I'm not sure, but I'll find out an answer for you.
Yeah. And I think percentage, as you were kind of suggesting there, probably is the right way to look at it.
Okay, so our accomplishments. Some of these kind of span from over a couple of years, but the implementation and updates to Earn Sick and Safe Time or E S S T, you guys have heard about that for a couple of years now. There were some updates that occurred in 2025 to that law. Pay transparency, this is a new one in 2025. We are now required to post the entire wage scale for a specific position, so anywhere from step one to step 12. We conducted the market study in 2024 and implementation in 2025. Currently, today, we are implementing an onboarding and recruiting module within UKG. So as I mentioned, we are responsible for all hiring, job postings, onboarding, et cetera. That process is currently pretty piecemealed. We have three or four different forms that people fill out, and we kind of all merge them together to get the data into one area. The system will allow applicants to apply within UKG. It will allow the department heads or the hiring manager to see all of that information within UKG. And then when we hire them, we can have all correspondence, so offer, letter, everything through that system. And then when we are bringing them, when we're meeting with them on their first day of employment, all of that data is already in the system. So instead of having, using 60 pages of paper on their first day of employment for kind of our personnel and our new hire packet, that will all be electronic in the near future. And piggybacking off of that, our electronic form, so as I mentioned, that was all, that process is kind of piecemealed together. I know Mark Sloan mentioned last week the conversion to Civic Plus forms, so we are also going to be utilizing that system and kind of getting rid of some of the other form options that we have. And then also new this year is going to be the Married Couple Insurance Waiver. We do, like I mentioned, we have nine couples that are, nine married couples in Clay County. We have five of the nine that one of them waived coverage and the other one carried a family policy. Any questions?
Any questions? While you successfully completed your first department update.
Great, thank you.
County Board. Clay County has really grown in scope over the last few years, particularly in the work that Human Resources does, and so I really appreciate breaking down the data for us. It's really helpful as we make decisions that really affect our staff. So thank you for that. Anything else?
Actually, I have one other comment. So I didn't mention it, but specifically to our health insurance. So we were in a four-year contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota. That contract included rate cap, so we had a negative 5, 7, 8, 9% increase. That contract ends this year, so we will be going out for RFP this summer, but there will be a lot of negotiations and a lot of conversations with the insurance committee, and no idea what that brings yet, where it's kind of a lot of, there's a lot of unknowns at this point. But just kind of want to remind you that this is a very big year for insurance. We, we don't know what to expect.
And thank you for that.
Yeah. Hopefully it's good, but you never know.
Thanks, Anna.
Thank you.
Item five today would be a request approval for a letter of support for the seven county construction and demolition grant application. Our Solid Waste Director, Cory Bang, is with us today.
Thank you for having me. The reason I'm here today is to ask for approval or for your blessing to apply for a $300,000 grant through the MPCA. The local cost portion for us would be up to $15,800. Excuse me. That is broke out by population of the seven counties. This is, this grant will be used to basically jumpstart the planning process of what we would do if the MPCA changes their rules. It sounds like those rules are going to be changed here shortly, and we'll have to have some idea of what we're going to do with our construction and demo if the Comstock location closes. So with that, I will yield to any questions.
Thank you, Cory. Both Commissioner Campbell and I were part of a discussion regarding this, and certainly this board has been aware that landfills in Minnesota are changing in regards to what is being permitted and allowed and/or what's closing. And, you know, we've had discussions in the past on what would happen if that demo landfill did close and what that would mean for the county. So certainly approving this through Otter Tail County, who would be the grant applicant, is really important.
I have one question.
Yes, Commissioner.
What are the seven, seven counties?
Well, we put you on the spot here. Otter Tail, Becker, Hubbard, Wadena, Clay, Todd, and I don't remember the other one. Polk, thank you. And we're also, just for the record, we're inviting other counties and other entities in if possible, so that would reduce, but this would be the max we would have to pay if all counties involved.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the letter of support to Otter Tail County for the grant application with a cost not to exceed $15,800.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Kravenoff, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Although, any further discussion, sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Request granted. Thank you, Cory. Item six today is a request approval of a letter of support for the Morehead Cultural Mall project. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As was mentioned, we're looking, I was contacted last week by the Immigration Development Center. If you recall, last year, we had a presentation from Fauzia in regards to a plan for a cultural center in the old bank, Wells Fargo, Wells Fargo Bank in Morehead. They have since shifted gears and are looking at a facility just right to the south as their cultural mall project for this year. Fauzia would have liked to have been here today, but she's actually speaking before the Senate in St. Paul. Capital Investment this week, and so not, wouldn't be able to be here this morning. And so the request that is before you would be that you would continue to support this cultural mall project based on the different areas that are laid out within the letter. Unfortunately, I don't have any additional information on cost of projects or the funding requests. That's before the Senate. I did reach out to try to get that information, but did not receive a response, so I'd yield for.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In searching, it looks like Senate File 9. Thank you, Mr. Chair. In searching, it looks like Senate File nine oh seven would be the number. There is blank appropriation, and it looks like they're seeking heritage funds to go forward that. And I think this board has been really supportive of the work that that group has done in town, and I think with Downtown Morehead, Inc., they've also brought forward support letters for this. My only concern sometimes when we have these is to make sure that it's not conflicting with our other requests at the Capitol. Looking at this, it doesn't appear so, but if she's testifying at the Capital Investment Committee, that is curious, you know, as we are trying to work with Capital Investment Committee as well. But any requests or questions, wishes? Yes?
I certainly strongly support their activities. They, it wasn't exactly this, but the group of people that are, have put together what they call a global market that went on display last week. And that was done over at the Yum-Con Center in collaboration with the Historical and Cultural Society. And there was about a hundred and fifty people that showed up for that event. And I think they've been working toward this for several, several years. I think there's a lot of synergy behind it, and it's just really good for our community. So with that, I'll move approval of letters of support for the Morehead Cultural Mall project.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kravonov to approve a letter of support.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you. Item seven is also yours. We have a request approval to provide additional funding to complete the judicial formation of the West Central Regional Water District.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you recall, back on February fifth, we heard a presentation, an update on the project from Stephen Slick from A E two S and Lucas Spath, the West Central Regional Water District Board Chair, on the judicial formation process. When we started this process, there had not been a water district formation in, going back to the nineteen eighties. And so at the initial process, we were given an estimate of right around three hundred thousand dollars. Unfortunately, as we've gone through the process, we found that that is not going to be enough, that there's going to be about another five hundred thousand dollars that we're going to need to, to get to the finish line. Having said that, the goal will be is that, that we'll get some additional funding from the EPA here by the summer. But in order to keep the project moving and the process moving, we're looking to get an additional one hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars based on, based on the funds that we would receive this summer. We would be looking to utilize those funds the same way, percentage-wise, as we've, we did the initial ask of Polk County forty-five percent, Clay County thirty-nine percent, and Norman County sixteen percent. And so again, like Ed mentioned, this, providing these dollars moving forward would allow us to, to not have any further delays and continue moving forward. So that total dollar amount for Clay County being requested is fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars if it were to be a hundred and fifty thousand, and seventy-eight thousand dollars if it, up to thirty, seventy-eight thousand if it would be the two hundred thousand dollar range. Again, we have funds that we would have, would look to come from fund balance. We've also looked into some riparian aid, whether or not that could be utilized. And at this point, I don't know, Mr. Milton, if we have a clear answer on that.
I don't know. We have, I mean, I think we've just looked kind of cursory at Minnesota Statute one oh three F point four eight, which is the water rights one, but then four seventy-seven A Riparian Protection Aid. It talks about the aid being allowed for public water courses, which are public waters and public drainage systems subject to the riparian protection requirements. So I don't, just kind of a cursory reading of it, I don't find anything that restricts it, but I don't know that we have an absolute answer on that yet to say certain. But at least an initial review doesn't show anything that would stop it.
So Brian, I think this is a good use, using the riparian aid. I think it does deal with water, and the fact that our ground supply of water is a danger, maybe a danger, I'm sorry, you know, with contaminants that are natural contaminants such as arsenic and, and also for mainly initially for these rural communities. So my feeling would be riparian aid has to do with water, and it also would mitigate and enhance, you know, public health. So what would be the danger you feel of looking at this fund?
I don't know there would be any danger to it per se. I mean, I guess somebody could come back and, I mean, I think some of the question really is about whether it's primarily buffer zone creation and monitoring and management versus just all water riparian aid issues. I think that's probably really the, the main issue. So being to say, you know, the Riparian Protection Aid Act largely created to allow for buffer creation on, on land and paying for that and whether it's creation, monitoring, that kind of thing. But I think there has been expanded uses of it. So I guess the worst thing that happens is somebody could come back and challenge it, question it, and we would have to, you know, refund that balance if it came out of there and it was not a proper use.
Okay, okay. And then Steve, if I may, or Ezra Bean, you're on the, on that board. How, how would it be possible, or just tell me how this would become potentially reimbursable? Do you know?
That, that would be with the EPA grant that's supposed to be coming in maybe in July. With that grant, the way it's written is that if funds are used, we can reimburse ourselves with that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
As part of that grant?
As, as part of that grant for helping implement this whole project.
Okay, okay.
And get this project off the ground.
Yeah. So once again, I'll just state for me, I'd be really, you know, unless someone's really got a problem with it, please talk about it. But I think the riparian aid is a good place to start with this. And, and I don't see us getting in trouble with it. I think it's a fund, we have plenty of money within, and, and give us a little more flexibility with our, otherwise our internal budget.
I might speak to that a little bit. I have served on the Riparian Aid Committee since the inception with the Dayton administration. And, and we have been really cautious about how to use those funds, particularly during the implementation stages. I know when you were on S W C D, we talked a lot about how that was going. I felt like between staff and residents, we had really good response to that. I know we wanted to save some of that back if there was some sort of litigation. But the discussions, you know, at the Capitol really were to utilize those in the best way to mitigate water issues is what I, I felt. And so as we move, you know, years past the implementation of the buffers and we're sitting on funds, you know, that, that, you know, I think the state looks to us to be frugal in how we use those, but certainly, given the discussions we've had at the Capitol, feel like this would be an appropriate use of that. If, if we do more investigation and find that it maybe isn't the best way to utilize those funds, and we need to take it out of fund balance, that makes, makes sense too. But I, I would be open to approving the funding of up to seventy-eight thousand dollars from funds, whether it be the riparian aid or the fund balance. Any other discussion?
I, I just want to make a comment.
Commissioner Bear?
We, we're getting close with this project to being almost done. So this money will go a long ways to getting that project done. And hopefully that grant comes in by July to push us through to get this project off the ground and operational. And I would, I would be fine with also using the riparian aid funds. I also sit on that committee, and I, I think this qualifies.
Any other discussion? I did see last week there was a bill introduction. I don't have it in front of me. We're up, was it nine million or eight and a half?
Nine point two million or?
Yep.
Great work. So they're doing a lot of work at the Capitol. Board wishes?
I'll make, I'll make a motion then to approve the additional funding up to seventy-eight thousand dollars and from the Riparian Aid Fund to complete the judicial formation to the West Central Regional Water District.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion offered from Commissioner Kravonov, a second from Commissioner Bear. Further discussion? Commissioner Ebinger?
Just a question for the, those that have the motion. Is that exclusively from the riparian fund or from, if that's not available from our general funds?
Well, it is available.
Fund balance?
All we gotta do is take it from there.
Okay. I just wanted to understand the motion, so...
So I, I think the motion is from the riparian aid. If there's, if there's an issue, I think we'll have staff bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Okay, are we clear?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Request is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item today would be committee reports. Commissioner Kravonov, would you like to start?
Sure. Light weight for me. So going back to last Wednesday, February twelfth, had a P R T F work meeting. And bit of strategy to it is we have both, both legislative groups back in action now. So again, again, refining our messaging, building our message, again, how we build out from it. And we're continually doing that every week. Commissioner Mojo is doing a lot down in St. Paul, and I try to pitch in also. We talked a little bit about the challenges of the session and, and potential, what it looks like as they work through this and the availability of grants and, and bonding dollars. But we'll deal with this. It's a, it's a thing in motion, and we'll adapt accordingly. The next day, I had the Clay S W C D monthly meeting. Commissioner Bear was there also, seeing if you can fill in any gaps. But at the beginning, it was about just mainly doing their committee appointments. These are typically done in January, but they had a full quorum this time. So they assigned those positions out. Probably the one that we sit closest here is Planning Commission and alternate, and that stayed the same with Joel Hildebrand and Randy Shalick. Other than that, we had thirteen cost here, planting, plantings that were approved, going up for farmstead windbreaks. That's good. Our numbers look good on trees coming up. And then there was also a approval of a, a payment on a stream, stream bank shoreline protection. And for those of us that got to listen to Solo Water present last week, they showed a picture of this, and it's three neighbors that got together, and it's a river starting to take its own course on the buffalo, and it will, these rock stream barbs were being put in. Anyway, it's a hefty grant of a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, but our funding through the one watershed, one plan is, is covering that. That's mainly what I, I guess I'd take away from it. The rest of it, I'll just finish up with this. They had talked about their legislative priorities in our meeting with us last week, and certainly we, I strongly support their positions that they're trying to continue to work on for their aid, for capacity, make sure that they have the dollars they need to have a staff to, to implement all this money coming in through the one watershed, one plan, you know, through the clean water and other grants the state have given them responsibility for. So that's what I have for the week.
Thank you, Commissioner Kravonov. Commissioner Bear?
On Tuesday night last week, I went to Glyndon Township with the county engineer. We talked about a couple of bridge replacements there, and then we talked about the tribal land on three thirty-six that was just purchased. Then on Wednesday, I went to Wild Rice Water District Meeting in Ada, where we discussed ditch eighteen again. They've surveyed the channel, and they're about to get a soil release from the D N R so they can clean the channel this spring, another chunk of it. And then they also discussed changing the, changing the language on their permit from reading, they, they changed the last sentence of it that, you know, would state, this, this is the current status. So this permit does not relieve the applicant of any questions, requirements for the permit, which may be necessary for township, county, state, or federal government agencies. And they just crossed out everything from township, county, state, federal government agencies. So you would have to find that on your own if there is any other permitting you need from those. And then we also discussed, they approved three permits for drain tile in the district. And then Thursday, I went to the S W C D board meeting, and Commissioner Kravonov did a very good report there. I have nothing to add. He covered that one very well. And that's all I have for my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Bear. Commissioner Ebinger?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Last week, I attended the Fifteenth Avenue Corridor Study with, I believe S R F was the consultant, and Metro Cog, basically a presentation on the information which they gathered during their public, public open meetings. I was able to attend one of those. Really helpful to hear what the municipalities and the residents want to see with that corridor, certainly given some of the information we have with the potential of a casino and event center on three thirty-six really changes how the scope of traffic flow would work. But really was helpful in discussing what are the options. We know what Dilworth wants. We have commuter traffic that goes through there. You know, what, what does a stagger implementation into our, our construction plan look like? You know, I think the cost range anywhere from seven to ten million dollars for that with property acquisition, the potential of trail paths. And I think Dilworth has put some pipe out there, so pipe moving. So definitely gives us some food for thought as we move forward. I attended the P R T F planning discussion meeting on Wednesday with staff. I just really want to give huge kudos to staff. This implementation in a lift like this is huge, and it takes a lot from all different folks, but particularly our staff. They're just working really, really hard to make sure that we have the information that we need to have the discussions in St. Paul. And, and so you guys are doing the heavy work, particularly in the Social Services Department, Juvenile Detention and Administration. You guys are just doing rock star stuff. The next day, I had a fairly long set of meetings in regards to capital strategy, talking about how we move forward with our asks, what do phased asks look, asks look like. You know, we really feel like we've pared down with the P R T F ask is. If we look at that twenty-five million dollars, it's, it's tricky because there are so many pieces that need to fall into place. But if we would like to build a standalone P R T F, we're looking at upwards of forty million dollars, I, I believe. So, you know, we really feel like it's already staged. But helpful insight from some folks at the Capitol on how we move forward with the asks. On Friday, I had a meeting with, hosted by the chamber, with representatives from the city of Morehead and Clay County and the flood, and the diversion authority for the flood mitigation ask. We had a really good synopsis of the discussions that we had at the Capitol the follow, the prior Monday. I do see that I, we got a meeting, or the potential bill language came either late yesterday. We'll want to send a response to the city as we're hopeful that we can have bill dropping and jacketing happening soon with that. And then, what else? I guess that concludes my reports. Oh, that concludes my reports. However, I was asked by Senator Rasmussen and Matt Hilgar to... However, I was asked by Senator Rasmussen and Matt Hilgar to attend a hearing tomorrow to speak before the hearing on what the cost shift for Health and Human Services waivers will mean for counties. We know what the governor's budget proposal means in regards to cost shifts to counties. We're looking at about $100 million to counties over the next biennium, just with what's proposed, and so we all know it's really important to provide our insights. So I'll be going down and back tomorrow to be present at that. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was on last week, so I was just going to cover a few things that you, you all did not cover or weren't a part of last week. Did participate, Department of Revenue training to complete our local government registration and authorization for our half-cent sales tax. That's just the annual requirement that we complete. Participated in county management on the 5th. We had updates from HR, Communications and IT. On the, on the 15th, we also, after that meeting, Matt Jacobson talked about the land development code and the impacts to each of our departments and looking for input and insight as we get close to finalizing that code. On the 6th, I met with Trenton from Cass Clay Land Trust, provided an update of the great things that they're doing. I think that they have several projects going in, going on in Moorhead. They also have projects coming up this year, I believe, in both Barnesville and Holly. And so he's going to come next week and just kind of provide an over, oversight of some of the work that they're doing. On the 6th, participated in our county administrator regional meeting in Fergus Falls. I talked about some of the federal, federal funding issues by the executive orders, talked about our state budgets and also the legislature. This, on the, on the 12th, I participated in the 15th Avenue Corridor Study that has been covered by Commissioner Mojo and also the PRTF planning meeting. On the afternoon of the 12th, I met virtually with Robert Wilson, Cass County Administrator, talked about shared issues. Later that afternoon, I met with Mark Sloan and Jackie in regards to our, sorry, not Jackie on that one, but Mark Sloan and the county code ordinance are on, we're moving to codification. We have, if our citizens have looked at our webpage, going back to the, I think, early 2000s, we've listed, we've listed our, the ordinance that this board's approved, but they weren't in a very good order, and so we're in the process of completing that process, and we'll come to the board here in a few weeks with, with the results of that work. And so we appreciate all the effort that's gone into that because it's going to be much more user friendly for, for our citizens. On the 13th, I met both Brian Milton and Sheriff Amptin separately on a series of issues with the county. I listened in, I guess, on the 13th with the paid, the paid leave committee hearing. Dave Becker, representative from the Wilmer area, has requested a, a one-year delay in implementation, and so they, just listening to that discussion was very interesting. More to come there. Participated on the 14th of the flood mitigation discussion that has been addressed. On Friday, participated in a meeting with Representative Keeler and Senator Kupac, Quinn and James, in regards to the PRTF strategies, and so that was helpful as we move forward. On the 14th, I met with Darren and Anna on a series of HR issues, and then had a department head evaluation. Just looking ahead here, our county-city meetings, I'll be sending out an email from a scheduling standpoint. I think we've generally looked at the April timeframe and before they get moving in the fields. And then also March, we're looking at our meeting with the HRA Commission. And so I know that in talking with Dara, she's put out a couple different dates, the two later dates, two later Tuesdays in March. I know that we're going to have some people missing on the 18th, so the 25th is, is maybe something that we'll be looking at, but I'll throw that out for your availability. And then last, just a reminder, I know we've talked about it before, but, but our CASA 14 projects going to be, will be closed from 336 to CASA 17, starting on the 20th. And so that's going to be closed from September, from, from February 12th to Sep, excuse me, February 20th to September 12th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that, Steve. Do we have any other reports, Brian? Okay, Jackie? Anything else for the good of the order? Do you have any reports, Darren? If not, we are adjourned.